For roll call, everybody is in attendance, so we're all good to go there. We're going to move on to public comment, and we have one, is this for me? Is it for something?
It's end, yeah, for the end.
It's end, okay, so do I have any public comment online for agenda items? No, I got one more time, anybody here for agenda items, public comment? No, okay, we're going to move on to the next slide, which is presentation for community service.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for this opportunity. One of our district goals is around expanding the ethic and benefit of community service, and tonight I thought it would be great to hear from some of our students. I know you love hearing from our students and some of the advisors. Community service here at the high school happens in a variety of ways, and when you start reviewing the body of work, it's absolutely astonishing, because it's not hundreds and hundreds of hours, it's thousands and thousands of hours that we're giving back to the community in a variety of ways. So tonight you're going to hear from four groups. You're going to hear from Spark the Wave, which is advised by Lisa Smoyer. You're going to hear from the Give Back Program, which is advised by Abby Wilcox. You're going to hear from National Honor Society, advised by Lauren Compton. And you're going to hear from our, from Kim Schiller about the Community Meals Program. So how about we start with Spark the Wave? I believe we have two or three students that are going to speak on behalf of Spark the Wave, if you ladies would come on up. Make sure you introduce yourselves.
Right here, sit down, yeah. Go ahead. Take a turn, it's okay. There you go. Excellent, speaking through the microphone.
All right. Hi, I'm Peyton Shoemaker. I am a senior here at Pots Grove, and I, this is actually my first year in the club Spark the Wave. Yeah. You go first.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jesslyn Ringstaff. I'm a junior at Pots Grove High School, and Spark the Wave really just like gets involved with not only community activities, but activities for like all the school district, like Spring Fest and Winter Fest and our Manor Care. Sorry.
Here, let me do this. Sorry, sorry guys.
Hi, I'm Madison Cole. I'm also a junior. I, I think Spark the Wave is really like, not just like a school activity, it's like a whole community that comes together, and we all, like, we all support each other as well.
So in Spark the Wave, we do a lot of different events throughout the school year. This year, we've done a lot with feeding the homeless. So me, as often as I can, every Tuesday, I go to a homeless meal that's actually run by one of the teachers back there at her church. We go to her church and we hand out meals to the homeless every Tuesday. I actually just came from there before this, so I was there today. And then we also do events for the, for the elementary schools, so we did a Spring Fest and a Winter Fest, where basically we just invited the elementary kids to the high school, and then we had a good time with them, and we did crafts and games, and they really like it.
So at Manor Care, we're trying to plan more visits, but the one that we did, like most recently, was helping them decorate for Christmas to like share like, you know, the spirit and whatever, the holidays. We actually met a lady named Penny there, and I think she affected all of us, because like without that field trip, we would have never met her, and she's awesome. But, I don't know, I just thought it was a really good opportunity for more people to get involved, not only outside of school, because some people like can't, you know, get, get like rides or anything, but it was a fun, it was a lot of good time.
I feel like with Manor Care, it was, like, it was an experience for everyone to see how, how much our community can grow from seeing the type of like treatment that they get there. Being there was really like eye-opening, and we saw a lot of different people. We talked to a lot of people that some didn't speak English, and yet we still tried our hardest to understand and also talk back to them. We, I feel like, me personally, I learned a lot just by being there for that one field trip, and I, also Penny, she was a big, big hit, and just her sharing her story was also very meaningful.
I'm going to go back to the Winter Fest and Spring Fest we do for the elementary students here. I remember going to those events and events like that as a little kid, and it's so special to me to be able to go to those events now as one of the older kids and help them have that same experience that I had.
Thank you, ladies.
Good evening, everyone. I am Lauren Compton. I am the Pots Grove High School National Honor Society advisor, joined by one of my advisors, or sorry, one of my officers, and then one of our members here. They're going to give you a little bit of an overview of what the National Honor Society does throughout the year and kind of just the process. Yeah, turn it over to Ben and Sydney.
Hello, my name is Ben Drago, and I'm a senior at Pots Grove. I'm speaking on behalf of NHS and the Give Back Program at Pots Grove High School. So NHS is a nationwide organization for high school students. Pots Grove's NHS chapter is a service-oriented club that's made up of 52 juniors and seniors. So you have to get into this club, you have to apply, but you also have to be recognized through your academics, and then you can apply. Then we look through those applications, and then you get accepted or denied. But, community service is one of the many requirements of all NHS members. Our members have completed over 1,500 hours of service combined in the past year. Members are required to tutor their fellow peers and participate in events throughout the year like the NHS volleyball tournament, NHS community meal, the can drive, and the NHS induction. Our members are highly involved in the community. Some of our members have participated in Green Allies at the Alt House Arboretum, Trellis for Tomorrow, Pottstown Pal, Dec Hockey, the Pottstown Cluster, and many more organizations, including over five local churches in the area. And as NHS vice president, I have an extended role in the club, so I personally helped to organize many NHS throughout the year, NHS events throughout the year. And I've also participated in tutoring for the past two years, and last year I tutored a student two to three times a week after school for at least an hour, and sometimes up to two until he understood what we were doing. And I became a mentor for him to not just improve his grades, but to also better fit his behavior throughout school. And NHS's tutoring requirement for all members forces them to connect with their peers through service.
My name is Sydney Cox. I am a senior here at Pots Grove High School. I'm involved in many activities such as the Give Back Program, NHS, Spark the Wave, and Student Council. One of my biggest things I like to do is community service. I tend to participate a lot at the Alt House Arboretum, where we like to hold events, and it really focuses on leadership, which is where I tend to get a lot of my community service experience. And then like Ben said, through things like NHS and Spark the Wave, we're able to host events here at the high school and reach a more educational demographic through our children at the lower levels of schools. And so it's been a really great experience to kind of get to hold these events and kind of bring children into both the educational and the fun, and have it not just be something that they're coming to school for, but something they're coming to school to have fun with. And so community service has really just been given an outlet for kids to come and get really into what they want, both at the high school level where they're leading these programs, and they're creating things, and they're gaining all these valuable skills, and with the kids and the parents and the community members who are coming and experiencing them, who get to come out and have a little fun.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I'm also talking on behalf of the Give Back, which is run by Ms. Wilcox. So I began tallying my hours for the Give Back Program last year in my junior year, and each year, so if you qualify, you get 100 hours, you get a green cord at graduation, so that's kind of like the motivation for that. And you also get like these medals, and it's like a tiered system, so for more volunteer hours that you get. So there's 19 members in the club, and we've completed over 3,809 hours of community service. Throughout the past two years, I've completed over 350 hours of community service, and a large portion of these come from my church, and specifically my week-long service trip at my church, where we paint, build fences, lay floors, and many other projects. So this is just one of the many things that I do outside of school as well, and that counts towards the Give Back Program that, yeah, and so as I reflect on my service activities, I remember the many things that community service has taught me. It's made me more compassionate, more accepting of others because of my life experiences, and I, I have and will continue to carry these things throughout the rest of my life, so.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kim Schiller. I'm a Spanish teacher here, but this evening I'm representing Trinity UCC in Pottstown. COVID hit Trinity hard. We've always been known as a church to provide free meals, but we could not have people come inside, so we did grab and go. Back in September 2022, we decided to go back inside. Hopefully, everybody here, Dr. Finity, all the school board members, Dr. Smith, Dr. Gonzalez, and Mrs. Kohler have received letters from the church, just trying to be one small way to show our appreciation to the Pots Groves for meeting a great need that all of Pottstown has. Yes, our students are phenomenal and volunteer, but we have had groups serve the meal. Spark the Wave has served the meal, the Pots Grove High School NHS has served the meal, the Pots Grove High School faculty and staff. Back in March, we served the meal. Last week, we had meal but nobody to serve. I put out a call, and my peep showed up. We were there to do the meal, and we're doing it again next week. And we have a group called the Mom Squad, is what my sister and I have dubbed them. It's for families in Pots Grove. It's the Loves, the Rose, the Gomeses, and the Shoemakers who have embraced this service project. Pots Grove Middle School's junior NHS at Christmas time made cookies to give out to all of our guests. The Kick Club, which is a new club organized this year by Megan Neeson, made Valentines, and they, we handed out Valentines to the guests in February. The people we serve are, some are homeless, but a lot are simply the working poor, where if it's a matter of pay electric bill or have something to eat, they choose to pay the electric bill, and so they will come. I asked a bunch of my squad to show up tonight, because if you could just see the look on the face of the people who are providing the meal when they know that Pots Grove kids are there to help, every single one of them, these are just wonderful kids. We have a new pastor, a designated pastor, and he said, "Kim, are all of your kids like this?" Well, you're seeing the cream of the crop. Because some of these students came because they had to fulfill a requirement of volunteer hours. But I have students show up every single Tuesday from 4:00 to 6:00. They will do whatever we ask them to do, scrub pots and pans, hand out laundry packets. They have brought in money to make laundry packets that we hand out to the guests. They've brought in clothing and toys. Last week, Emily Gomez brought in a bunch of her old toys and stuff, and people were like, "Finally, I can give something to my child for Easter to put in their Easter basket" because of Emily's kindness. They bring in clothing, they, they just, I could go on and on and on, but Dr. Smith told me not to talk too long. So, what I would like to do, and I spoke to Dr. Finity about this, I would like to name the students who have been helping at my, not my, but Trinity's community meal, and have their name go on public record. And if you guys are here, if you'll stand up when you hear your name, please. So in alphabetical order, Evan Brogley, Ashley Castillo, Ethan Chambers, Kayvon Chin, Maddie Cole, Ben Drago, Trayvon Foster, Josephine Gibson Custer, Emily Gomez, Connor Love, who's a fifth grader, who is the best dessert hander outer on the planet, Jacob Love, Luke Makins, Dwadi Machuki, Johnny Nyheart, Kelly Nyheart, Jess Ringstaff, Jacob Rowe, Nicholas Rowe, who was the one that spearheaded bringing the cookies from the junior, the junior NHS, S.J. Rowe, Emily Shoemaker, Peyton Shoemaker, who, just a side story, my sister and I wrote a note to her boss to stop scheduling her for Tuesday so she could come volunteer, and she actually handed the note into the boss, which we just did it as a joke, but hey, we have power. Ryan Stoy, Declan Tabor, and Cole Williams. So if we could please applaud these students. They do this volunteering because it gives them something. It speaks to them. The guests love to see them. My sister and I were just talking about it before I came over, and I apologize, this is my grungy, I've been at work and then at the meal until 6:30, so I apologize for my appearance. But we were talking about how we don't even have to ask these guys to do, you guys can sit down if you want to. We don't have to ask them what to do, we don't have to say, "Do this, do this." They are, they show our groups, this is what we do now, now we do this, and they will have the dining room cleaned up before we're even done doing the dishes. So, thank you, those of you that are here and those of you who are not here. They make our jobs easier, and I'm very proud to say that I know each and every one of these students. Thank you.
So that was just a little taste of what happens here.
thank you to all of the children and young men, young women.
I've learned throughout my career in education that there's nothing more rewarding than helping
You are an inspiration to our group.
people, and this group of young people have realized this at a very young age.
As someone who did a lot of, where we had volunteering, obviously everybody here in
So thank you for all the opportunities you provide, and hopefully we can continue to
volunteering, but in other areas of our community, it's incredibly difficult to get people
expand our programs and expand what we're able to give back to the community. Thank you.
to volunteer, and the fact that they're doing it at such a young age, I commend them, and hopefully they keep up with that all through. So thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the student board report. Emily, you're up.
Okay, so, well, anyway, mine's not going to be nearly as interesting as that, but after coming back from a personally much-needed spring break, I wanted to give a update on spring sports. So both of our track teams are currently undefeated. Our Unified Track Team is currently 1-0, who, because we, when we won our first meet against Daniel Boone, PV, and Ameis last Monday. Our track team is 3-0 winning meets against Pottstown, Phoenixville, and PJP. The girls softball team had two dominating wins over Daniel Boone and Upper Marion, winning 17-0 and 11-1. The girls lacrosse team had a dominating win over Pottstown as well, winning 12-3. The tennis team won two matches, 5-2, and the boys baseball team had a close win over Upper Marion, 7-6. The Unified Track Team has their first home meet next Wednesday, April 19, and we would love if everyone came out to support us for our first home meet. Another note, the high school hosted German exchange students over the past few weeks. They were here from March 18th to April 2nd. The students were hosted by high school students and their families who allowed them to come into their homes and experience American culture and education system. Students went to the middle elementary schools and also went some historical places like Philly and Washington DC to learn about the history of America and just get to be millerized with how we do things here.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the reporter of the superintendent.
Thank you. Just one item this evening, pre-K counts. We will be submitting a grant proposal to fund two classrooms of pre-K counts. Pre-K counts is a state-funded educational program designed for children who are three and four years old and living in families earning up to 300% of the federal pottery level who may also have special needs. If we are successful winning funding for pre-K counts, we can offer up to two years of programming for at-risk students prior to the entry to kindergarten. Many of the surrounding districts do offer this. Pottstown, I believe, has 15 pre-K counts classrooms. Boyertown has quite a few as well. I believe OJR also has some. The grant is a competitive grant, and it does favor pre-existing programs, but we are very eager to bring this, I think, need to our district, and really help prepare our students so that when they move into kindergarten, they are ready to be students and ready to be, more ready to be successful. So, stay tuned.
Any questions?
So it is a, it is a quick turnaround. The grant is due by the end of this month, and we should hear, we expect to hear back prior to the end of this year, because we would have to do hiring for it. It's a pretty significant grant. If we're successful, we would start it next school year, yep.
Anything else? All right, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the high school, middle school, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
We haven't got there yet. We're at the minutes.
Oh, the minutes, I'm sorry. You're right, I can't do the minutes.
I need someone to get it approved. I have a motion, a second, to approve both 6.1, 6.2 for the minutes. Do I have any comments or questions on those?
I'll be abstaining from this.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And one abstention. All right, we'll move on to the account, the accounts for audit.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the high school, middle school, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the accounts for audit. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to 10.2.
I'd like to make a motion combining 10.2 through 10.8.
I have a motion, a second, to combine the remaining elements of the action items for personnel, 10.2 through 10.8. Does anybody have any comments or questions on any of those?
I do have a comment on 10.6. The effective date is grayed out there. The effective date is actually last week. This is for our certified nurse, yeah, so apologize for that.
What's the difference between certified and non-certified when it comes to school nurses?
So certified school nurse has to go through an educational program and essentially is trained, they're, they have a certificate just like a teacher. It's a, essentially a two-year commitment to get that certificate, so, and you have to have a certain number of certified school nurses per, you have to have essentially one per 1,000 students in a district. So we have two, I know, two and one who is training right now, yes.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, 10.2 through 10.8. Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to action items business.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 11.1, the budget transfers.
I have a motion, a second, to approve 11.1 budget transfers. We have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to 11.2.
I'd like to make a motion, do we approve 11.2?
I have a motion, a second, to approve 11.2, the pediatric service agreement. Anybody have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to action items education.
I'd like to make a motion under education, 12.1, to approve.
I have a motion, a second, to approve 12.1 conference attendance. Anybody have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to approval of the policies, 13.1.
I'd like to make a motion, action items, that we approve the policies as submitted.
I have a motion, a second, to approve 13.1, the policies as submitted, or the three policies. Anybody have any comments or questions on any of those policies? Hearing none.
I personally don't know this teacher, but I wish her well and a happy retirement. And thank you for her service.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to 10.2.
I'd like to make a motion to combine 10.2 through 10.8.
I have a motion a second to combine the remaining elements of the action items for personnel, 10.2 through 10.8. Does anybody have any comments or questions on any of those?
I do have a comment on 10.6. The effective date is grayed out there. The effective date is actually last week. This is for our certified nurse. Yeah, so apologize for that.
What's the difference between certified and non-certified when it comes to school nurses?
So, certified school nurse has to go through an educational program and essentially is trained, they have a certificate just like a teacher. It's a, essentially a two-year commitment to get that certificate. So, and you have to have a certain number of certified school nurses per, you have to have essentially one per 1,000 students in a district. So, we have two. I know, two and one who is training right now. Yes.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, 10.2 through 10.8. Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to action items business.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 11.1, the budget transfers.
I have a motion a second to approve 11.1 budget transfers. We have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to 11.2.
I'd like to make a motion, do we approve 11.2?
I have a motion a second to approve 11.2, the pediatric service agreement. Anybody have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to 11.3.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the sponsorship agreement, 11.3.
I have a motion a second to continue on with MESHOP physical therapy as our sponsor agreement. Anybody have any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to action items education.
I'd like to make a motion under education, 12.1, to approve.
I have a motion a second to approve 12.1 conference attendance. Anybody have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, move on to approval of the policies, 13.1.
I'd like to make a motion, action items, that we approve the policies as submitted.
I have a motion a second to approve 13.1, the policies as submitted, or the three policies. Anybody have any comments or questions on any of those policies? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, move on to JOC meeting update.
Yes, we had a meeting on April 4th. The Western Center hosted the Perkins Regional Meeting on March 30th. After the meeting, they hosted 15 CTE directors throughout the programs. There will be 11 students from Skills USA going to states this year, which is quite wonderful for those students. This month, the NOCD performance testing is being performed, and we'll have more information as it comes. Mr. Livinggood, thanks the districts for allowing them to come and present the 2023, 2024 Western preliminary budget to board members. The districts indicated in our meeting that a lot of our schools got out of it, like Springfield and Upper Perk, they didn't really quite understand all of what goes on over there. We have currently 364 applications they've received. They're gonna be placing the kids. It should be done by this week. And it was noted, which was kind of shocking to me, there was 22 less applications from last year. The NOCD written test has been going very well. Most students have placed incompetent and advanced. This is an 8.9% increase from the start of the year to the current, which is a written test. The NOCD performance testing will be on April 16th next week. We have 50 students out working on co-op, which is a phenomenal number. There have been 967 certifications earned so far this year. What they're gonna start doing is sharing with the homeschools, the kids that receive these certifications, so that they could go on their transcripts. So, that's, that's a move in the right direction. We have a commercial arts co-op student, that she has completed the program of study of a guidebook. We do have a social media person now, Lucy Teroski, and she's this cute little thing. She's adorable. We did have some in attendance, let me see what's right here. We've had a lot of awards. We've had Kelly Adair, a junior from Upper Perk in early childhood education. She took first place in the FCC LA State Championship. She will be going to Nationals in Denver, Colorado. She showed, demonstrated somehow for how she incorporated STEM into the early childhood education classroom. She prepared a portfolio of activities, skills, lesson plans, and student photos. She had 20 minutes to prepare and 10 minutes to give the presentation. So, that's pretty, that's a lot of pressure right there, but she did phenomenal. We had Gunner, who was there, a student from Upper Perk in our protective services program. He took silver at the hostess state competitions. His task was out of three scenarios, choking, bleeding, and fractures, then taking two minutes to define a checklist of things, how would they be resolved with the injury. Out of nine, he placed second. We also had a student in sports therapy program, she placed second out of 12 students. She had to acknowledge, had to the knowledge of test, answering 50 questions within one hour. She also had to perform physical therapy on a woman who was swelling in her hip and helped her learn how to use a walker. Both Gunner and Rosalina are invited to participate in the national conference in Dallas, Texas, which is gonna be the last week in June. On May 24th, we're gonna have our senior awards in recognition at Upper Perk, and how we do that is whoever's a superintendent of record, they'll host the senior awards. We started on policies. In fact, I don't know, did you guys get them, policies? Oh, okay. I'll have to forward them to you. Mr. Davis shared the committee again with the options for setting a capital fund for maintenance at the Western Center. So, this is something we want to try to establish for 2024, 25. And we were all forwarded the articles of agreement to review, and we have two committees. We have a new policy committee, which is again Springfield, Upper Perk, and Pottsgrove. We tried to get one of each. So, I'll be doing the policies and facilities with Joe Vecchio, and you already do personnel. And that's it. Any questions? They're busy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, we're gonna move on to committee items. Item 15.1.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve 15.1 through 15.3.
I have a motion a second to approve the three committee item meeting minutes. Anybody have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, let's move on to policy committee report.
Good evening. There were five policies that we covered, which was pretty amazing in the hour time that we did. But the first one was policy 137, which is on home education programs. That's an existing policy that's been updated since, well, hasn't been updated since 2002. There were some items that were removed from that, put into administrative regulations, and then I meant to ask Dr. Finerty prior, between the two meetings, if he could expand on what exactly administrative regulations were, but we didn't have time to, because we went from one meeting to the other. But maybe if you could explain exactly what they are, just in general, what administrative regulations are, so to explain why.
So, the administrative reg interprets the school board policy and defines what practices are going to occur in each building, so that each building in every instance is operating in accordance with the building policy, the school board policy. Administrative regs don't require school board votes, so we can adapt them more easily to changes as necessary.
Thank you.
Another, a great example of an administrative reg that you're well aware of would be like a student handbook.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I apologize for the short notice, because meetings went. And then throughout the policy, we spoke about the fact that the curriculum office is what deals with the homeschool student and evaluators to report to determine that the student family was, the families are in compliance with the homeschool regulations. That was the main policy. The next three policies were policy 137.1, 1.2, and 1.3, that two of which are new, one of which we've been updating, are updated. And those are to make sure that those students within our district that are homeschooled are able to participate in extracurricular activities, as well as co-curricular activities, as well as academic courses from home, and also the career at the technical at the Western Center. So, those three policies independently dealt with each one of those areas to allow, make sure that those students in our district that are homeschooled can become more part of the Pottsgrove community at the school. And then the last one was, we've, two years ago, three years ago, updated the use of facilities to make it such that whenever the student or the group renting the facilities were more Pottsgrove students, we would try to make it as free as possible, and then for outside groups, have more burden of cost on them. What has happened is that there's some youth programs from Pottstown that have closed down and have been sort of, I guess, absorbed into our own programs, specifically Future Falcons, LPAA, which I'm not quite sure what that is. Basketball, okay. Little League, and then the youth wrestling. So, what we did was to insert into the policy for the moment that instead of requiring them to be specifically Pottsgrove students, we've added in that the superintendent has the ability to modify it as necessary to allow those groups to be, you know, not to have the burden of a cost that they did not experience before, because then they would just not be able to participate. So, that was that.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Thank you. Move on now to new business. Dr. Finney, you're up. Tina?
Looking forward to asking Emily how school's going?
Um, it's good, but I will say this break realized how many days are closer to summer, and I have a countdown. So, I'm very aware that there's like, I think it's 36 or 37, I forget, but I, these warm days though, they're, they're nice. I can go outside after school and like, it's more than, almost there, but yeah, it's good, it's good. I like, I'm actually, I'm actually in a good place right now at the break, so. You got, call me on a good day, I guess. I don't know.
Do you know how Lily's doing? Because, you know, she's not here, so if you can just, you know, speak second.
Yeah, she's good. She has, I think she's at game. I'm pretty sure she's, yeah, that's where she's at today.
So, she's in goal right now?
Yeah, she's in goal. I forget where, she did tell her where she's at, but she actually sits near me at lunch, so, you know, I got, I'm making sure she's good. No, she's at a game, so she should be here next week.
Okay, well, you were missed last week, both of you. Last, not last week, right, the last meeting.
Oh, yeah.
They all blend together.
Yeah.
So, last meeting, you were very much missed, so I was looking forward to this. Thank you. Thanks for sharing.
I do want to share one other thing. I did have a conversation with Emily before the break. So, earlier this year, we completed a survey of students in high school, and in that survey, and actually in similar surveys with our middle school and lower elementary, we saw some results about student culture. So, having conversations with Emily, she's gonna be working with Dr. Smith and also with our music teacher, who is pursuing an administrative cert, Zerfos, to shape some questions to further explore how, how students are getting along with one another and what we can do to improve that and support students in doing that. And also engagement, which came out of the parent advisory meeting. So, I told Emily when we hired her that we were gonna put her to work.
Yeah.
So, she is, I'm gonna characterize you as excited in helping fill some of these questions.
I'm getting my team together for you. I'm getting my, my leaders.
Okay. You hear that, Dr. Smith? Okay. Thank you.
We're gonna move on to Patty.
I just want to make a comment about all the community service that the kids are all involved in. That is so key to being successful. It just helps their motivation, they're engaged in giving back, and I just congratulate all of our administrators out there for doing a great job at all different levels. I mean, that's so important, so important, so keep up the good work.
Jay? Joe? Dr. Nipper? Coming around, Jim? Bill? Ashley? I don't have anything, except we do have public comment. So, Ms. Robinson, come on down. Ms. Robinson? Two minutes.
Yep. Brianna Robinson, Lower Pottsgrove, and a teacher at Rocks. I'm here tonight as a follow-up of my last two visits. It has become painstakingly clear to me that nobody plans to visit Rocks. What I have been told in various ways is that it is not the board's job to get involved in these types of issues. When I spoke last, I heard from a couple of you that you would take the time to visit just to see what we've been speaking of firsthand. However, shortly thereafter, it was shared with me that these visits were not taking place, and more importantly, that some of you are angry that I have been coming to the board. After that, I had learned that there was a visit made to both lower and west, even though I was told that one couldn't be made to our building. As an educator, my purpose for coming to these meetings is to try to help our building and to try to help our students. I have accepted the fact that no matter how many times I show up here, this is not the way I'm going to get change. And I'm okay with that as an educator, like I'm giving in on that piece. That being said, I am also a resident of Pottsgrove, and I'm incredibly disheartened to know that the elected officials of my local district do not deem it necessary to visit when these concerns are brought to you. As a responsible citizen of my community, I cannot wrap my head around why you wouldn't want to look for yourselves, even not trusting my word, just so you can see for yourselves what is going on. I cannot understand why, being in the position you're in, you would take somebody else's word for it, instead of seeking to gather that information. However, I alone cannot make a change or approach this any differently. This is the one thing that I now know. In the meantime, I will continue to have conversations with my colleagues and my administrators, and I will work towards creating an environment that is safe and beneficial for our students. I will also continue to work with the dedicated staff at Rocks to provide the best education possible to all students who enter our doors. And I will tell you that last week, when I was here at PD, that quote up there, Pamanjula Davis, that says, "You have to act as if it were possible to radically change the world, and you have to do it all the time." As educators, we have to do it all the time. There is nobody else to do it for us. So, I thank you for letting me come here, but as far as this bridge, I'm not crossing anymore. I'm done here. But I appreciate you listening, and I know Dr. Finney and I have talked, and the administrators and I have talked, and we will go that through, although I wish it were different. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Anybody online? Alright, then, I need a call for meeting in German. Question? Go ahead, answer. Yeah? Sure? If you're talking about personnel... I was gonna say, that would have to be exact. Alright, give me one second. So, from my understanding of the rules, you tell me if I'm wrong, alright? I can call an executive session, but I need to have three people on the board?
No, you, well, it has to be a proper subject for an executive session. I think the big picture isn't. If it's personnel and discussion of specific personnel, that's a proper executive session topic, but, so I'm not sure if you want to discuss specific personnel, where you certainly have expressed your concern, but I don't know if that's the extent of what you wanted to express. If you're in fact... So, I would just say that if it deals with specific personnel or deals with specific student disciplinary issues, that would be a proper executive session topic. Otherwise, you know, I mean, just general school climate concerns, I don't believe are, you're obviously entitled to express your concerns, I'm just saying, they're not necessarily proper executive session topics.
I don't know of anybody that's... I want more people from the district and teachers at the board meetings discussing things, not less.
So, on multiple occasions, I have come to you, and they've always either begun in a personnel committee, or they've begun in executive session with dated, asking you for addition... or they've begun in executive session with dated, eh, eh, asking you for additional, uh, support. Uh, most of the time in form of staffing. Every single time you guys have supported, uh, the ask and you've, uh, allowed me to, to add, add the staff. We have added twenty-one, uh, twenty-one new, uh, positions to the district, all in support. They're all in either academic or behavioral support. Most recently at Rocks, uh, just in, in not to, well, uh, again, talk about executive session, but, uh, I communicated the need that based on our CTE analysis, that's, that's the, uh, uh, the, the caseload of special ed that I needed, uh, even though it wasn't budgeted, I needed your support to hire another special ed teacher this year. You guys came through and we've, we've moved forward with that process, uh, and, and, and that's just one of them. There was two others you approved. Uh, one of your very important jobs, and we talked about it quite a bit today, is to, uh, approve a budget and, uh, personnel. And you've done that. Uh, and I, I thank you for it and it's, it's having an impact. Um, I mean, part of the reason that the, the budget is, is where it is, is we are heavily investing in Rocks, uh, and, and other buildings, but adding Springfield psychological, adding RBTs, adding, uh, BCBAs, adding all these behaviorists to those positions. That's real and that's happening and you've done it. So do we still have work to do? Absolutely. Uh, nothing's perfect. Uh, but that's, that's not nothing. Thank you. How they're addressing them, what's working, what's not working. Um, to give us a picture, which is then appropriate, I think, for our role as board members. The, the statements I've been hearing is that if we sat there and saw these behaviors, we would be appalled. And, and do what? I'm, I'm not sure. Uh, but I really, I think it's, it's the responsibility of, of the, the leader there at Rocks to identify those behavior issues and to provide either request and then provide resources to handle it. What are they doing? Is it working? What's not working? Is there anything additional that's needed? Uh, if he would choose to bring teachers or other leaders with him with that presentation, that's his choice. But because we've heard from some of the instructional staff, the teachers, I think it would be helpful to hear from the leader there in the building, uh, and say, here's, here's what we're experiencing, here's what we're doing, and here's how it's going. And I'd like to see that at a future board meeting.
Here's my only concern. Let's say that is concern, right, is that, and I could be wrong, you would obviously have more experience in this than I, as in the role of the school board is the curriculum, is the budget, is that type of area. We hire the people to run the district. So them coming to me and saying, this is the issues they're having, I'm going to say, it's, it's, all that's going to do is sit there and say, well, why aren't you doing it? I mean, it, I would hope they would be doing that behind the scenes. Whereas, look, I more than would love to go down and see things at Rocks, right? But I can't do anything. I don't run the school. Right? I am on the school board, I'm one of nine individuals, one of ten when you include the superintendent, as in to saying, hey, look, we want to make sure things are done correctly, but I'm never going to be the person that's going to call up the, the principal and say, do it this way.
Well, I don't think that's what, coming from her stand, my perspective, the same thing. Evidently, they feel that we are not holding David Calhoun accountable. That's what I'm, I'm pulling up out of this. Is that we're not, we're not holding him responsible to get something more done. That's what I'm hearing and how I would feel as, hey, I've gone to my principal, hey, I've gone to my vice principal, gone and I've come to meetings and talked out loud about it and we have the same problems. Desks are being run, I know what's going on in there. I, I talk to people, people talk to me. I'm sure most desks are being run, four, four adults in a class at once because they have to have it. I have issues with that. And I thought this up before.
But now, just keep in mind also that the teachers came to speak to us in December.
Right.
But back in September, Dr. Finney brought to us the fact that there were problems at Rainy Rocks and that they needed to hire people and that they were going to be bringing in three, three behavioral, I'm not sure of the titles. But so months prior to that, we had already been informed that there was an issue and we believed, we didn't actually have to see for ourselves, we believed that there was an issue. And that, so something was done months prior to that. Apparently the.
I, I, well, that's, that's one, and I think I said this, I think I said this in the last meeting. There's a lack of communication going on. There's a lack of communication going on. I don't know where that's fallen apart. I can, I can take it as a guess, but somewhere, when somebody goes back in and says, we haven't been listening and I'm sitting here and I'm saying, we haven't been listening, we don't, we can't do anything about it, and all of the above is, I, I, it's really upsetting is because I've been pretty darn vocal about it. Oh, you do? There, there is a disparity between, uh, what we just heard and, uh, our perceptions from, uh, other places. I think it is probably, uh, uh, the, I, the idea that was presented earlier of, yeah, Jay, Jay's idea is perhaps a worthwhile way of proceeding. It's not worthwhile for us to transact business either after we've adjourned or when there's a motion to adjourn on the table. You know, procedurally, uh, I think the only thing Robert's rules allows at this point is us to vote on the motion to adjourn. Uh, which is silly because there's, there's matter brought before us. Uh, your opinion seems to be that this does not require an executive session or it's out of the domain of executive procession. I'm just thinking.
Out of the domain only if we're not going to discuss personnel. If we're going to have a discussion like we're having right now, that would be here. If we're going to discuss individual, what we're going to do with personnel, whether it be the superintendent level, whether it be principal level, or whether it be, you know, whatever level, that would be executive session.
I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, procedurally, I'm kind of, uh, uh, a novice about this because Robert's rules doesn't always hold. And, uh, what I need to know is what can we do at this point?
All right, how about we do this? All right, how about we go back to where Jay was saying? We don't know as a group. I, I'll be honest with you, I don't. I, I'm, I'm, I don't have any students in Rocks. I'm not in Rocks. I don't know. I can only go by what I hear. And like Joe, what I hear. He hears more than I because he's closer to that group than I am. Right? But we can, at least for some individuals that are not seeing what's being done, we can do some type of presentation and say, look, the board wants to see what is going on to make the situation better. We've heard a lot of times where there's been issues. Obviously, we either have a lot more work to go, but we need to know something's being done. And we'd like to know what is being done. That sound fair?
Mm-hmm.
Can that be done by next meeting?
Sure.
That'll at least help alleviate that. Now, it's not going to cure anything. Just because things are getting done doesn't mean that it's going to get better tomorrow.
It definitely is not overnight. And I understand that. I think teachers understand. So it is a process.
That's what I was going to say, is these, these behaviors have been learned over five to six years, um, or, or more with these children and they're not going to change overnight regardless of how many people we have in there helping them. But we are doing the right thing by hiring, you know, more, um, uh, we, we just brought in Springfield counseling and, uh, you know, the, these are COVID kids, unfortunately, who a lot of them didn't experience socialization and, you know, um, they, they grew up, you know, that had to be really, really hard for a lot of those kids to, to not get to play with other kids their age, not learn how to interact and react and, you know. And it's a learned behavior and it takes a while to get that behavior to be unlearned. Um, you know, I, I feel terrible for the teachers at Rainy Rocks for what they're having to go through. But I do know that there are a few success stories that are happening right now, but I can't share because I, I just can't, but there are. No, no, no. What I'm saying is, um, um, students that are no longer at Rocks, but in other, you know, who, who are getting extra help and they're, 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 um, being very successful and it's looking really good for them to, to, to come back.
And the other, the other thing that is important to understand is, pardon me, the, uh, district goal MTSS that is somewhat nebulous to, to people not in education, that is entirely focused on getting kids what they need. Uh, MTSS is not a new thing. It's been around for ten or so years. Uh, we're building ours, so we have some, we have some work to do. Pre-K counts is not a new thing. Uh, but that's something that we need to get involved so that, uh, students, especially at-risk students, aren't having their first day of school on their first day at kindergarten. So these are investments that, uh, I, I wish were in place. Uh, they're not. I mean, it's, it's the joke. When's the best time to plant an oak tree? Twenty-five years ago. When's the next best time? Right now. Uh, so we're working towards those things. Uh, and I think we're doing the right things and I think, uh, all of these things will pay dividends. But again, I just, I want to remind you, because I'm, I'm appreciative of the commitment that you have. When I've, when I've been able to bring you data and show that, you know what, we need additional staffing, you guys have stepped up. And, uh, I, I don't have staffing requests on my desk that have been unmet. Uh, so that's, that's not, that's, I, I think, uh, admirable and I thank you for that. So, thank you.
Hey, what's, any other comments on that one? All right, then we'll go back to any motion. Oh, wait, you have. Did we check online? No, any extras since we opened up? Okay. Then I do need a motion for adjournment.
It was.
I have a motion, a second. Do we, all in favor? Aye. Well, any opposed? All right, we'll see everybody in two weeks.